Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 11th Journey and Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to ask you all to rise and pledge their allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please your main standing for one moment of silence and observance for the 9/11 victims? Thank you. All of those in this meeting pursuant to the approval of the Act had been given by the clerk in the following manner posted on the bulletin board in the clerk's office and emailed to the retrospect and the carrier post. Do we have a call call please?
Chairman Cleedham.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Here.
Ms. Cusion.
Here.
Mr. Bajal.
He is excused.
Mr. Vannella.
Here.
Mr. Ockley.
Here.
Mr. Laverdy.
Here.
Mayor Pottis.
Here.
Mr. Venery. Ms. Dodd.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Rowan.
Here.
Mr. DeRosa.
Here.
And Mr. Knight.
Here.
Thank you. There's a motion to the board for the approval of the minutes of the August 14th meeting. Is there any questions on the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Motion of Mr. Vannella by Mr. White on favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Old business for the resolution of creating bulk barriers to permit installation of a front yard fence previously installed, Mr. Rowan.
Yes, this is a premises located at 449 Hersch Avenue Block 65, Lot 12, located in an R-1 residential zone as the Ford may recall, the owner of his business dynamic had torn down a fence, existing fence, and installed a new fence which was didn't conform to our ordinance. She came in and we found that since it was on the same footprint and it was the same height as the old stocky fence was, it was proper and brand of the business.
Okay, and we have a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution 19 dash 13. Ms. Ockley, Mr. Vannella, a call please.
Mrs. Cleedham.
Abstain.
Ms. Cusion.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Ockley.
Yes.
Mr. Laverdy.
Yes.
Mayor Pottis.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
And Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, on the business, we have an application 19 dash 05 requesting a bulk barriers for construction of a garage at 617 Burt. For the applicant, please come forward to state your name and address at the microphone, please.
George Pettis LA, 617 Burt Road.
Welcome, how are you tonight?
I'm good.
Pastor Sow, could you raise your right hand? And I'm gonna have our engineer, Ray Sis, and Anthony, you both gentlemen solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're about to give this report tonight is truthful and accurate to best of your knowledge.
Okay. Okay, what can you talk about, would you like to be sure?
I'd just like to build a garage next to my house. I got the room on the right side of the house, not right on the left side, that's why. I'm putting it on that side of the house. Twenty-four by twenty-four, it's pioneer pole, uh, pole one is the concrete.
Do you have a picture of the garage or anything?
I got, I got the prints, he did send me the prints.
How high?
It's, he says fourteen, um, six is the total.
Can we go up?
Eighteen.
We allow that. You are allowed, I don't know if that's a habit. I thought we do allow eighteen, that means.
Or one.
So you have more of a fit.
Yeah.
It is eighteen, so you're allowed to go higher, just like.
Yeah, instead, I think, uh, I'm going twenty-four by twenty-four, like see, you're on fourteen.
I didn't mean this, I'm sorry, I didn't do this. Part of the application, seeing the drawing on yourself, it helps.
So are you aware of the review letter from Bach and Associates?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Um, so Anthony, I'm gonna defer to you, if you would like to go through that with the board, please.
Okay, yes. Uh, our office prepared a review letter on September 5th, 2019. If you turn the page two of our letter, at the bottom of the page, in the center of the chart listing all the bulk standards for the R-1 district, and at the bottom of the page, the variances that are required, this application requires one variance to permit the garage be constructed two feet from the side property line, where the minimum distance permitted to a side property line is five feet. On the third page of our letter, we have three review comments in the center of the page. We're asking that the applicant provide testimony as to the necessity for the two separate driveways for the property. Number two, the applicant shall provide testimony regarding intended use of the proposed garage. And number three, we're requesting the applicant provide a grading plan for proposed improvements to confirm that no adverse strange conditions are created by proposed improvements that would negatively affect any adjacent properties.
And that is something, I've had discussions with Mr. Bach, and we're going to try to integrate some grading plans for most of our applications, just because we don't wanna have any adverse problems with the neighboring properties when it becomes an impervious coverage issue. We wanna be a little more proactive in getting grading plans for, you know, anything, you know, that we think is a little bit bigger than a shed, something that's gonna change its property of it. We wanna be a little more proactive in making sure that we address that before we grant the application, instead of having a problem with a neighbor coming in after the application has been granted and the building has been built, and then there's a problem. So we wanna try to look more proactive with that, and ask the grading plans be provided with most of our applications on something larger than a shed type of application. Um, do you have a testimony on the separate driveway, George?
Well, I know it's an issue, but I don't know how to fix it just yet. My existing driveway, I would've built the garage in there, but I didn't have the room, I didn't even have the room for a small garage back there, like behind the house, except for from the house. Had it on that side, that's why I put stone on there, 'cause I figured if I put stone it first and then try to figure something out, or unless you guys are gonna be removing one driveway, you know.
Do you use the other driveway part now?
Right now, yeah.
Is there a garage in front of that driveway?
It's in the house.
It's in the house, okay.
It's part of the cast down apartment.
Where are you gonna use this new garage?
I got a sixteen mile stall hangout and just a work, you know, up on the corner, so.
Well, I, I would say that, I know we don't, the impervious coverage is an issue, but I would rather see a concrete driveway apron than stone. I don't think that was a decision, 'cause that would be better. And then I'm wondering why it's only ten foot wide, is that more, I mean, 'cause obviously one of the things that I see is trying to get cars off the roads, so.
I agree.
You know, getting cars off the roads is better.
The door I'm putting on the garage is sixteen foot wide. I could go closer.
I would, I would, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if, if there's a limit, I mean, I didn't wanna get too wide, 'cause I already had the driveway, and I wouldn't.
And impervious coverage.
I didn't wanna have time to cross the whole front yard or whatever.
Yeah.
But if you went wider and then put an apron, there's no apron there.
There's no apron there, there's not much of a curb.
Yeah, that's fine.
But we do require an apron, right?
I believe.
Sure, you should have it.
Should have.
Yeah, I'd make it acceptable.
Yeah.
Anthony Jefferson, do you have a second?
Uh, well, that, that was part of our comment was just, and this will, I guess, flush itself out if, if we receive grading plans, just seeing the stone, we're unsure if the apron is proposed as well, and that way it could be accessed more easily. So with the grading plan, if we could see how the, you know, apron and, and the driveway would work with the proposed garage, then that would help, you know, everybody be comfortable as to.
Well, if we were to make it a condition of his approval to have an apron, to have the concrete driveway, which is what I'm kind of hearing from the board here, what is that gonna do to our impervious coverage, or are we gonna be able to achieve proper grading?
Right now, he has the, I, I don't believe there's a requirement for the maximum impervious coverage, there's a lot coverage, we're just dealing with the building, he's not proposing any additions to his building. He's at twenty, I believe, twenty percent where thirty-five is required, so.
Allowed.
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 Allowed. And so I, I believe he does have the room.
He's underneath that thirty-five.
To go under that thirty-five.
Even with an apron, correct?
Correct, I don't care. Oh, it doesn't have to be concrete. Any concrete, I'm just saying that apron aesthetics, how it looks, the stone, I don't, if, if you're building a twenty-four by twenty-four garage, I think it would really.
And you're full of concrete, slash, like. Would you be receptive to that, sir? Yeah.
Concrete pad.
Concrete pad.
Do you think it should be wider than a ten feet, though? I mean, or do we start getting any impervious?
Well, I, I do believe it would, and again, you'd have to check the impervious, but as far as the apron's concerned, if you wanted ten foot closer to the garage, I'd be acceptable to that, but down by the curb, I would imagine, we would want it a little bit wider to get turning in and out and then.
Or twelve, cut the whole.
We could do that, we could do that contingent upon your review.
Correct.
That's why I would suggest the contingent upon the engineer's review and approval. We'll make it a condition of his approval that we do a concrete driveway with an apron, and contingent upon Mr. Bach's office reviewing for impervious coverage and for the grading plan.
So the variance really is only that, that one corner that's two feet off.
That's correct.
So the only thing I noticed, and this is something we deal with in the town all the time, is you obviously have a fence, and the fence is on the neighbor's property.
Yeah.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Knight, do you think, I mean, in order that I hate to make you spend money, these are the fights that we always have with neighbors and neighbors, are you thinking about doing anything with that fence, all the kind of fences?
It's, it's a BBC fence.
Oh, you put, it's a BBC fence?
Yeah.
Looks good.
It looks good? But you see, it's a foot, it's a foot.
I, but I have to go by my property line of the fence, front two foot.
No, 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 that's your fence now, right?
It's, but we share it, we and the neighbor share it. We split it. Your back.
Okay, I'm just saying, the fence is supposed to be on the property.
The neighbor's notice, the neighbor's here, he has something to say.
The neighbor?
No.
The neighbor's here and have a problem, and we can address it, the neighbor's not here, they have a handshake agreement.
And then there's gutters, and downsdown each side, or one side?
Yeah, if you gutter and downspout on the front side, and then gutter downspout on the back side, which if they were worried about the, like, the roof's gonna match my, my existing roof, where it goes right or left, so. You're saying about the, the, my, yeah, the grade plan, um, I'm not gonna change the grade of your yard, and your yard, they drain really well, I mean, they're sanding slow. You leave the hose on, it never, doesn't.
That's, that's, that's up to engineering, why they would change anything, whether they have to be changed.
Do you have to see a grading plan?
Yeah, we have to see a grading plan on this, um, for, you know, just what we were talking about, if the downs spout comes down on the right-hand side, that it's only two feet from the fence, you're, you're now adding, you know, half of that garage, twelve by twenty-four on impervious, going off, and we would just like to see, you know, on the plan, that along that fence, it does drain, you know, to the street, and very well. I understand nobody can attest to the soils or anything like that, but on the surface, if it grades down towards Burt Road, then everything's, you know, okay.
So I just have to shoot some, some elevations from, what do I compare it to?
I think it's a professional, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, you know, it would be a professional plan that would give the elevations of your entire property and contours, and you'd be able to see which way the water drains, and if it's coming across your yard, you know, past your garage, your garage's gonna have to be elevated in a way that the water can get around it, and you're not creating a puddle situation for yourself.
Both of our, my neighbor and mine water come to the fences, and just, it just goes away.
It'll be something that's proven out in the, in the plan, it's math, it's all about math. Once the math's proven out, then it's not a problem, and that will be, that will be a, um, a condition of your approval.
Is the air in the front or on the side, is the air, is it an airframe?
It's air, yeah, air's on the side.
Air's on the side.
So you got front water, and front panel coming from the.
Yeah, that's probably on the left.
I could put them wherever, I could take the, I could take the back one and bring it to the front door.
That's the whole thing about the grading plan, get the grading plan first, and then take the recommendations of the, of the grading plan.
So where the water comes.
Just make it happen, and you book it away where it has to go.
Yep.
Any other questions from board? Mr. Rowan?
Was there any requirement in the board that the, that the concrete driveway be more than ten feet, Jim, or the apron?
Well, we did talk about extending it down at the apron for being able to back out each way.
So the apron, conditioned upon an apron of twelve feet?
Twelve feet.
Twelve foot eight?
That, that would work as a minimal, yes.
Minimum of twelve feet.
If he does the calculation, and for the impervious, and he can go a little wider, and he wants to go fourteen or sixteen, um, I know personally, I just built one that was sixteen feet wide in my house, and.
Sixteen like the minus point?
At, at, at the road, it's sixteen at the road.
What's the recommendation, let's not redo it three times, what's the best, what's best?
I, I would say, I would say maximum of sixteen feet.
What's minimal? Minimum of fourteen?
So, okay, minimal of twelve foot eight, okay.
Yeah.
So he could go twelve apron, twelve driveway if he wants.
Or you'd go sixteen, and then go twelve.
Yes, it would, it would be, it would be easier to go twelve, or sixteen to twelve, I'm sorry.
I don't know what you're talking about, twelve to twelve.
And then it makes it a little bit easier to pull in and out of the driveway.
Absolutely. Okay, at this point in time, I would like to open the meeting up to the public, anyone wishing on, wishing to speak on this matter, and this matter only, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and you may be heard.
See a number from the public wishing to speak on this? I mean, look, uh. Settle.
Motion for Mr. Ockley sent in by Mr. Vannella on favor.
Aye.
Mr. Rowan.
Okay, the applicant is properly located in R-1 Zone District, and he comes before us tonight requesting that he be permitted to install a freestanding garage twenty-four feet by twenty-four feet. His plan indicates that the property's to be constructed within two feet of the right side yard of the property, where five feet is required by our ordinance. As long as the board is satisfied with the applicant's explanation of why the garage has to be located there, you can find that there is a, a cause to permit us to, to grant that variance. And the variance, though, would be conditioned upon a file, conditioned upon the submission before a building permit is allowed to be pulled, a grading plan to be reviewed by our engineer. Uh, and any comments regarding that grading plan, if there is a deficiency, then obviously that's gonna have to be worked out, the engineer and the applicant. Also conditioned upon the installation of a concrete driveway with an apron, an apron at the, at the site where the street comes to the property, and with a minimum twelve foot width. He wants to, applicant wants to put one sixteen feet, that's fine, but it has to be a minimum of twelve feet. And further condition that the final plans to be submitted are to be reviewed by our planning engineer for.
And the driver.
And, and the driver, yeah, that, that's what we, should be located along the plan and submit.
So on the elevation plan, you want that?
The proposed, the proposed garage and the proposed driveway, yes.
Okay.
They're gonna want that on the plane instead of something.
Something like that, right?
Well, you oughta have, they're gonna want it by engineer.
By a professional.
So while you're having to do that, what I would do, George, is have them actually locate this building on there, so we know it's two feet from the property, so there's no question.
So the surveyor, could the surveyor do this, or he can't?
Well, he can do the grading.
He can't do the grading.
He can do the grading.
But the grader could take the, the voice survey and.
Put it on top. Overlay.
Overlay, it should be.
Right, is there a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution as read by Mr. Rowan?
The motion.
Mr. Ockley, is there a second? Ms. Cusion, a call please.
Mrs. Cleedham.
Yes.
Ms. Cusion.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Ockley.
Yes.
Mr. Laverdy.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Mayor Pottis.
Yes.
Do you want to express?
We need, we need seven, we need seven votes, so.
Uh, Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
And Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Do you understand what happened?
I think so, yeah. I need a grading plan for the garage.
And shoes drives out of there.
And apron.
All right, thank you very.
Do you understand the reason, right, for water, the water being shown, it's exactly what it is.
Yeah, I would, I would have known that.
That's okay. Not a problem, you have Mr. Bach's phone number and everything?
I, I think I can, I'll say here's.
That's Anthony.
Can I send directly to you there? Um, well, I would say send it through the, through the clerk, but if you have any questions or your engineer has any questions, you know, give them my, my number.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Well, we have a letter from Mr. Robert Sweeney, which we generally get every year. He is the owner of the Anthony's Royce property on Eve Sham Road, he's requesting to sell Christmas trees. I don't think we've ever had a problem with that.
Also, then, you know, it's been closed before.
Right.
Is there an issue in that building?
Sure is.
Yeah.
And was it taken care of?
There was some.
Mr. Knight, I don't think the. The matter is not to resolve, yeah.
Okay, what, what is the issue?
The general issue with some pipe freezing.
Yeah.
There's damage inside.
We're gonna require, I'll put this there on, and after you get to see it, you know, what kind of permits it would be.
I don't think there's been submitted yet.
If there's no, if there isn't anything pulled, we're gonna ask for an electrical survey.
Okay, so he can't really even put up lights to add to the top.
But he won't be able to put out lights.
That's what I'm saying. So we cannot approve it at this point in time.
Well, then we should have a law.
Yeah.
He's gotta get everything running right.
What's his status, will he be with the facility?
Yes.
They're gonna need a GFI's and have something happen out there.
Absolutely, I totally think they're. We should do that in writing, Mr. Rowan.
Um, I think every year when he would request, we just had, I think Keith would write a letter, and say it was.
Are you okay with that?
Well, he would submit for a temporary recent activity sign permit and everything that I.
Well, I guess my.
Well, now, you're, yeah, you're just requiring a electrical plan.
I guess, I guess my question is.
Electrical certification.
Well, you need an electrical certification.
Electrical certification.
Everything's fine.
Yeah.
As, as a courtesy to, um, Mr. Sweeney, I don't, I don't wanna wait until November 15th to tell, hey, guess what, you can't put your trees up, I mean, he, you know, he's been a business owner. Exactly, I think, I think we should, as a courtesy, um, reach out to him as soon as possible, and tell him what we have a problem with, and he has to fix deficiencies before we will issue him, you know, the permits to do that. I mean, you know, he has to be in compliance with electrical, or we can't have completely lights outside and have him have the problem. So if we could reach out to him sooner or later, I think that would be a.
You want me to call him, I'll call him tomorrow?
Okay, I appreciate that.
I would put it in writing, too, just so there's no. It's gonna be permitted, but it's conditioned upon electrical survey.
Do you put a email address on there?
Uh, I didn't get it, Joyce, can you give me an email?
You suggested we make a motion?
No, Keith is doing writing, saying that there's no objection, but this year is conditioned upon electrical.
Oh, email.
Okay.
Yes, just so there's a paper.
Do we go on to the next one, then?
You wanna wait, you wanna wait till on next one, babe?
Or do we vote on it with a condition?
You can vote on it with a condition, yeah, so to get the guy's score.
The electrical certification.
Yeah, I make a motion then to approve based on any and all.
Condition upon.
Construction electrical, uh, conditions that need to be made.
Now, discussing what's the status, what's he.
You and Frank get together on that? I appreciate that. All in favor?
Maybe second.
Uh, Mr. Laverdy and Mr. Ockley, I think it was. Oh, no, it was Nick, I'm sorry.
I made a motion.
Nick made a motion, and then Mr. Ockley.
Mrs. Cleedham.
Yes.
Ms. Cusion.
Yes.
Mr. Vannella.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Ockley.
Yes.
Mr. Laverdy.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Pottis.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
And Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Right, very good, thank you very much for that.
Just so you guys know, the email address is located on the letterhead.
Yes, she gave it to Mr. White, thank you. Okay, just a couple, three things that I observed over the past week or so. I don't know whether everyone knows or not, but Top Results is moving, that's the old Golden Sheer building, they are moving out of there, and they're moving down to Glen Door onto the Black Horse Pike, which is down by the Ed's Ticket Agency, so apparently there's, there's some mold issues in the building, some mold remediation issues that they really weren't willing to deal with, and they wanted to get a bit of a larger facility, so they decided they're relocating, I think the first of the month, so I was talking to John, the owner there, I guess it was on Friday, uh, so, I mean, that's just something, that's one more caveat that I think we need to bring to the redevelopment table when we talk to, um, the redevelopers that we're trying to bring in, or the people that we're trying to talk to, to bring in the redevelopers, um, that may be a parcel that would be available. I mean, obviously, we have the leachages there, but, I mean, that corner right there, I think you said Joan would like to sell at the antique store.
That whole corner is a pride corner.
Right.
You don't have all the, you don't have all the properties in there that can sell. That's the problem.
That's what I'm saying, so we don't, we don't know, and this is one I just found out on Friday, I had no idea they were moving until Friday, so now we got Top Results moving, we got the antique store that wants to.
Well, I wouldn't say, I don't say that out of turn, but she.
Yeah.
She's, she had expressed. There's people who would be interested in doing things.
Right.
This is previous, there's one particular owner who refuses to sell, so that whole, every application that's ever come in has always died because of that, that corner property. I don't even wanna say his name, but we, the Green House, will that sell? So it kind of, it, it just, that stops anything that happens on that property, yeah, that's the problem.
Well, just food for thought, I just.
Hopefully they'll get, they'll get the property cleaned up and it's okay.
Yeah, I really don't like having.
Wouldn't that have been a smarter thing to do than lose a tenant?
And get another empty, another empty property, you know, it just stinks, you know, but.
It just sounds like it's a self-inflicted...
Whoa.
Right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how long, what have they had, two years, maybe three? You did the signing for him.
Well, it's been, it's five or six years, he likes it.
For Tina and John? I remember the other fellow had it for a while.
Yeah?
Yeah.
The other, the other person moved the buyer.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
Yeah, they've been there a while. I'm trying to go back.
Yeah, but it's tough parking.
It is tough.
Pulling in and out.
It's really tough parking, it's, it's real quick, you know. So, we have, we have that going on. And I don't know if anybody saw Keith's email, but just for example, Rita's, Rita's Woodroofs, the banner are just wrapped around sticks, they're just in total disrepair. And so Keith's gonna have to speak to them about that and then...
That's every year with them.
I know, it's just, I mean, I wouldn't want my name to look like that. I don't understand, but it is what it is. And I don't know if the gentleman that owns the store even knows it looks like that, but it's, I mean, I have pictures on my phone that I sent to Keith, it's just, it just tumbles. It looks just in total disrepair instead of being something that's attractive. You know, it's like...
How many days did it...
Thirty.
And how much beyond thirty are they?
Way beyond.
Go ahead.
I've driven around town and there's numerous places with sign violations, so I created a list instead of the buck in between this inspection store and site. And we've got pallet signs.
You try to be nice, try out to like, say thirty-one days, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, you try to...
It's not in a tasteful way, I mean, that's the big question. I know that's a matter of opinion, but...
Looking, if you look at its current condition, I'd say you would have almost a hundred percent agreement, it's really horrendous. It's detracting from the, you know, community and the business.
And that's Rita's, right?
Yeah.
And I, on the night we voted on that too, and I said, well, what about everybody standing in line in the parking lot? Oh, that won't be, it's not that way every night.
It's not.
People are standing out into the parkway, you know, they don't stay on the side and go on, they all stand in a parking spot.
I mean, we don't want that stuff down. We don't want that stuff, just, you know, looking like that, I mean, there's no excuse for that.
Is that the former mayor of Grohlington, does that do this?
Yeah.
Is that it?
I don't remember, some people from Grohlton.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, you have an employee go out, climb around, walk the miles up, and straighten the anger.
The helping man, right? Yeah.
Well, they both just...
Have to see them.
They're terrible. I mean...
I didn't notice it's...
He's a mayor.
I mean, you had seventy-year-old kids say, go out there, straighten the sign out. So we use advertisement, we're supposed to be advertising, not rolling around sticks. So, I mean, you know, so thank you for being proactive with that. And it's, I mean, I know we're all trying to be business friendly, I certainly am more than anybody. And you don't wanna say, okay, you're thirty-one days, take it the heck down.
Exactly.
But they're...
When it deteriorates in such a condition, it's difficult to comprehend how a business owner can open their business every day and not see that.
And not say, yeah, I have a case that...
You know, you're looking to invite customers and clientele to your property and...
And it just makes our town look bad.
Well, yeah, it just makes the rest of the tenants and everything. And there's really no reason for it.
No, no excuse. All right, so at this point, that's all I've got. You know what, um, I had to leave the redevelopment meeting a little bit early last month. Mr. Mayor, did you have any you wanted to expand upon with that meeting?
No, I missed it.
Okay.
I can go after talking too long, so can I?
Okay.
I'm not gonna say anything. Because I think the, the group has to do their part first before...
I just didn't know, Bailey gave up the hand, he congratulated me, very good, leaving that.
I got one question for you here.
Yes, sir.
What about Eamesham Road?
What about?
Do we have money to set aside or do we help, or is that anything to do with us as far as repaving that road? It's a disgrace. I mean, from London, from Defford all the way up into Voorhees to the borough.
There's a, the first stage is, there's going to be guardrail done first, starting from basically Defford all the way to out of the county. Federal government's paying for replacing the guardrail. That was part of our PSC and T agreement. So the borough is putting up about eleven thousand dollars to redo the inlet and the sidewalk will all go in, that's what'll happen in the next sixty to ninety days.
So the sidewalk goes in, it's part of the street now, is that...
Yes, the curve moves a little bit out.
Right, okay.
And then the sidewalk...
So the guardrail is on, protecting this...
It's a combination, a high rail, right? It's a high rail now.
Um, and it's a combination of federal government paying for the high rail, the county...
And when do you think that'll be started?
In sixty to ninety days, that'll all be done. Actually, Runaby is phase two, so the first guardrail is in that Gloucester town, so they're starting down here at Dover.
Okay, and then what about the road?
As we're paving the road, the county has doubled their, now the DOT funding they get, they used to get four and a half million dollars, now they're getting over nine million dollars. So the county's been much more aggressive with their road programs.
Is that...
Eamesham Road is part of it, but it wasn't not in Runaby issue. So, a lot of the work was being done, did you get the list, you remember seeing this kind of list?
So it wasn't in Runaby, it wasn't in Glendore either?
No.
No.
No. So, it is on a list.
Yeah.
It does mean something, because what happens is, once the, once they get done, the other leg of, say, there's a couple of roads in...
Let me guess, four of these?
No, it was, it was all over the place, it was all over.
But I thought we got more funding from these, this gas tax too.
That's what I said, they doubled the amount. Well, I mean, you're getting about a hundred...
Oh, that's where I came from, okay.
We're not getting three seventy five. The county was getting four and a half million, now they're getting nine hundred. And the funding is every year, where there were years where towns did not...
Didn't qualify.
Didn't qualify, yeah. So it's been a positive in that sense. But a lot of people weren't shoved away, like a lot of, nobody was taking the time to spend money to get your all things done. So there's a lag in getting some of the work done.
Were we wrong?
No, we were the exact opposite. What we did was, we took sixty-two thousand dollars and did our feedbacks, we fronted the money on an application we didn't know we were gonna get. And we had...
Rolled it up.
We rolled, we rolled it up. And we had like getting three hundred seventy-five thousand, the borough only had a hundred twenty-five bit that we're doing a fifty million dollar project, which completes Schistler Circle, Woodman, South Rowan, Shepherd, we're doing that whole.
We're in North Rowan too, I think.
Which one?
North and South Rowan.
North and South Rowan, yeah. And it was because the state owns another road right there, so that was a good application to do that. So even though there's many other roads that need to be done, if they don't meet the criteria... But if they don't meet the criteria, it's harder. When it touches a state road, you get more points. If I'm saying the extract, make sure I'm...
That's, that's pretty, pretty...
Yeah, if you hit the state road, you get points, if you hit a county road, you get points, it's just... Why, don't you change it then?
Well... Is that fair? Because it hits a county road?
Well, well, here's the argument. The argument is, this town has every right to use their own money to fix roads than anywhere...
So you could do one a year then, right?
Oh, yeah, we did that. It's one of the reasons some roads are completely gut up. The only reason we even got Irish built on those is because we had such a great price with Elmar to do, do you remember that? It only charges like forty thousand dollars to build a building, you couldn't, you can't do draw patients for seven thousand dollars.
All right.
Damn it. That's why I'm like, just like, I've been on a grading plan. Wait till I see what a grading plan costs.
Yeah, we have to do that.
I've not been on it, there's a definite issue.
We have to do that.
How much do you think that'll settle at?
Anything?
Twenty-five hundred?
I was gonna say two thousand.
Okay. Really?
Well, the thing, it, it, there, again, it, it all depends, you get what you paid for. You could probably find somebody that will do it for a thousand dollars and then I'll review it and I'll add more comments and then the guy's gonna have to redo it and eventually it'll get up to the two thousand dollars. So you shouldn't just put two thousand dollars out in the first place and it'll come back, acceptable. But we didn't do that on all these applications. I mean, we've had two or three...
But we have to start doing it.
Right.
There's definitely potential issues.
And, and it's not just this board, we're running into a bunch of towns where the issues where somebody wants to put a shed or a garage or an addition onto their house and it's not in the town's board and it's required grading plan. Then a couple of months later, once that addition is put on, then the neighbor's coming back and saying, you know, hey, they're, they're dumping their, their roof drain right onto my property. Well, there's always gonna...
Legal civil issues, yeah, that's...
I, I understand that, but we could have prevented a portion of that in the beginning if we would've said, hey, don't, don't put your downs out this way or, you know, if you're gonna put your addition on, you know, put some stone out to...
He won't get, he can't...
To continue on the approval.
He won't get the approval, he can't, he can't put a shovel down so he gets that.
This is the, this is the no door. You know, we have to, we have to give them the yes.
Right.
Right? One of the things that I see as being very punitive about the whole process is that...
Which question?
That gentleman was trying to comply and only by coming before the board did he find out that he had to do yet another thing. Is it possible that we could simplify this so that people will know what they, what they need? Cause he could have done that all in... And he could reduce the size of his garage and move it five feet, because he was not coming in front of this board.
Right.
Yeah, but how do you know? Because the ordinances are available. So in terms of like...
But you're gonna be grading plan?
No, 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 that was contingent of the application. If he reduced the size of the garage or if he moved it five feet off, he would not have been in front of this board.
Correct.
So that's what they're saying, how do we enforce it? Council and no previous council for ninety years has ever had a grading requirement.
But that's my question. How can we make someone do something when if he was just five feet different?
It's contingent of the...
But what I'm getting at is, we're making... Is it fair? I meant, if we don't have the ordinance...
Do you understand why I said it several times? Do you understand what you're agreeing to? Everybody realize why I said that?
I do. If that's something that you're saying we need, how come we don't have that as an ordinance?
Council has not made it a priority to make it an ordinance. Candy is pointing it out, we've had other issues, but once, and it's definitely something to think about, but you're right, it isn't imperative.
Is that in your packet of other applications for hotels?
No, 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 that would be an ordinance.
Well, is it in there, even a ballot?
Well, you know, it's funny that you say this, the house that was approved that you guys did for Evergreen Avenue or Sunset, the reason he bought it, Runaby, is we don't require a grading plan. Because he couldn't get more proof about it. I understand where you're coming from, you tried to eliminate problems, it's one of the reasons I said something about the fence. I kept to deal with this nonsense. I don't know the answer to this, it's not...
What I'm hearing, what I'm saying is, if that was three feet over...
He doesn't need it.
But he's still gonna get the water, you're still gonna have the same issue.
No, not us, because we're not the ones calling.
No, but what I'm saying is...
If he came in without a variance.
Same issue, a water going on a property.
Potentially.
Potentially, right.
We don't even have a very good impervious coverage, from what we say.
It's the same yard, it's different, it's lot coverage, not impervious.
It's the same sized building, is what I'm getting at. So the water is the same, nothing's changed.
I inherited this.
Well, the thing of it is, we have to be proactive going forward. We can't just turn a blind eye and say, hey, you know, if we...
No, I agree with you. Shouldn't it be in writing to where we should be able to enforce it and not just throw it at Joe Smith, whoever comes before us, because someone, Nick thought of it or whoever thought of it. I, I don't think it's fair to do that, I really don't.
I was just saying something.
Well, we have a solicitor here, we have an engineer here.
You can put on whatever reasonable condition you feel that's required.
Dave, I, I agree with you.
If you, if you put in...
Now, we're picking and choosing.
Yeah, but listen, and if that's, if that's the tenor of the board, how we wanna move in the future, you know, that's gonna be up to the board. But if you put in there that a grading plan is required in order to, to get a variance, okay, then if they haven't, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, well, what I'm saying...
If he, if he's required not to hurry, to get a grading plan, to get a variance?
Right.
He goes to the money, what if we don't give him the variance?
They already spent the money, and you guys, nothing. The idea here is that we all know that other townships and things are having problems with this effect of the fact, okay? We don't wanna be in that same boat where we're granting things and all of a sudden there's a problem. We, this is our only, this is our only time to be able to put conditions upon something. Once we grant the application, there's nothing we can do about it. And if that thing starts flooding over here or flooding over there, there's not a darn thing we can do about it. It's our job, I mean, we, we are, we are charged, it's what we are charged with as, as vending and zoning board people, we are charged with looking out for the public. I mean, we don't get paid, this is, this is the paying job. We're all here just because we care about the community and we care about the people in the community and it's our job to protect their interest. You know, they're not here, they don't know what a grading plan is, they don't know what the topography things are, and we have to protect them. And, you know, if it costs somebody a couple thousand dollars to protect everyone's interest...
That ain't my point.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that fact, I'm arguing if that building was three foot over and came before this board, he would not be required to do this.
That's one of the reasons that it's because it's going so close.
I don't think it's gonna make a difference with the amount of water that's gonna come off that hill.
Yeah, but could we have just said...
I'm not a expert, but you said, that's why we pay the engineer to do that. Well, I'm saying, three foot is not going to affect, let's face it, we could...
Both are a little late on your comments.
We are a little late. My comment isn't that it's not approved, my comment is, I feel that it should be a hundred percent, it don't matter whether we're gonna get a variance or somebody's coming in for a...
Well, that's another issue, that's a council issue, council have to pass an ordinance saying that we're building something that, see, here's what I would even argue though, do, you know, there should be a threshold if you're going over the impervious coverage.
Yeah, but...
But now you're making an notice on everybody to spend two thousand...
And if they get turned down, they get all thirty thousand.
They're putting a twenty-four by twenty-four shit. It's write a letter to council that you're recommending, you know, a change in ordinance for that. I can say what a couple other towns are doing that are faced with this problem is, if you come in for a shed that's, you know, under four hundred square feet, then you don't have anything. Anything above four hundred, so then you have your threshold. So then people that are, you know, coming with a garage that's twenty-four by twenty-four, they would be over the threshold. So whether they're five feet off the property line or two feet off the property line, they went over the threshold, they have to do a grading plan. Same thing with somebody that's gonna put in a pool or a deck, because you don't know, I mean, if they put in an above ground pool, they have to raise it up a little bit, now all of a sudden the water's getting...
But I'm kind of, you know, to Ken, to Ken's point, you know, he's wanting to know if we could preempt someone not being able to come in and get a clean approval the same evening. I don't think that's a good idea, because if they spend two thousand dollars and then they get turned down, they're, they're out of pocket on two thousand. He's already gonna be held up a couple of weeks.
Right.
And he, and he already has his approval. You know what I mean, I think it's, I think, I would, I would feel very bad if I made an incumbent on every single applicant that's going to go over a certain threshold to have a grading plan before they come in front of this board and they spend two thousand dollars and then we say, no, I don't think so. That's awful.
Agreed, it's, it's, it's a fine line, but like the gentleman said, three feet over, we would've never seen us.
Yep.
And then he's saying he's pumping his roof drain right to that, that corner. Yeah, but we would've seen it if he's taken out a permit and, and that was part of it, right?
But you can't, you can't do anything, can you?
Can't you make the guy, there's gotta be conditions on the permit, well, it's...
He's gone, he's destroyed some...
He's driving the water out because he strikes on somebody that's.
Okay, but we did, hey, we did with another guy here, and I'm not gonna say who, who put up the garage and all, to, we said at the end, well, just make sure everything drains towards the street. That's what we said.
I wasn't.
Okay, well.
I wasn't.
It doesn't matter who was here or what, that's, that's what was put into it, and that, and that's not right either.
Yeah, now let me just make something else clear, because I go in front of a lot of boards. You can withdraw your application. You don't have to agree to the terms.
Right, of course.
There's all these opportunities, I don't realize that. A person can say, I don't, I, I've been in front of that, on that side, and said, I don't agree to the terms. You know, and I said, I'm not doing it.
Of course, at that point, he's better off coming with an attorney and telling.
Or reducing size of the garage.
Yeah, exactly. But I think that's what an attorney would've said to him.
Again, we talked about representation.
He could've built that wall on a napkin.
I was, I was gonna even suggest it.
Well, he wanted that, he wanted to do, he wanted to spend the one. Now we go again.
Well, I understand where it all starts.
On any large building, we should be, if it's that important, it should be underbuilt.
Well, the one thing that we noticed, Mr. Mike, and tested is, is that the borough has to do a better job of building impervious coverage. Uh, we've had a few instances, because Runnymede is a, a smaller lot size, is where people are making their whole property concrete. And then where's the water go? Now, the lawyers would say, well, they had, they're responsible where that water. But when I start this whole day off, people don't wanna fight with their neighbors, they want us to do it. So that's why I agree with Candy, that this board is the first step of, of, in, come to council meetings, I was watching, watching me get yelled at, because one neighbor let his tree die and it fell in the other neighbor's yard, and I have to listen. You know, and what do I say? I'm gonna go out my jeans on and cut it down, because it's easier for me to go do it myself than let the court.
Do you want that one?
I want it. I have two bucket trucks in the car.
One of their bucket trucks.
So, see if we went on.
Yeah, sure. Ah, so, now, listen, all, all good, every, every single comment.
It's all good comments. You're not simply town going through.
Yeah, that's why we do this.
There's a lot of, you know, towns that are mature and developed that are running into these problems where people are putting additions, uh, pools in, garages, different things like that, and they run into impervious coverage issues.
There has to be triggers then. You can't make them spend.
Not, you can't make them do the way they're.
There has to be, like you said, a reasonable threshold that will, will do it, so that they know upfront, okay, I'm putting in a four hundred square foot shed, I have no problems. I don't have to do it, I just got the permit application and go. But if I'm putting in, you know, a pool or a ten thousand square foot addition, or, I mean, that's, sorry, the garage. You know, then that does trigger it, and I gotta come in with a plan that calculates the impervious coverage, that calculates the, you know, where the water's gonna flow, and, you know, makes it easy for everybody, you know.
The mayor and council's gotta approve that first.
They would have to approve, I believe, an ordinance for that.
But two other things, I mean, applicant could always, just because you got approval for something, doesn't mean he has to do it. He could come back with, with a plan that meets the criteria.
Right.
He gets a price, he doesn't wanna do that. He could move it to three feet or reduce the size. Um, you know, the, the, the second thing, what you, you just said was that the, uh, I think, you know, I agree, we, we have to have a standard so that people know before they come in. But this board has.
Right.
But the point that Candy was saying though is, he got kind of put within having to do something. This board has the right to do that. This board has the right to make a condition once they ask for that.
That's what we're charged to do. That's what we're.
As long as we're consistent across the board.
Right, you're gonna do the same for.
But then you, you, you wave your hands, but you don't think that's right? Well, get to pick and choose which.
Yes, because that's, that's exactly the answer. This board is, they're not set by precedent. You wanna remind them what the law says?
I don't care if you're set by precedent. What's the ethical, the right thing to do?
The ethical is, is delicate. Every single application on its own.
Okay, right.
And we look at an application, because it was two feet, that's a little excessive, two feet next to a property.
But it's not the entire length.
I agree.
It's two foot for what, about seven foot?
But do we, but do we all agree that's, that's, I don't pretend to have that expertise, but do we all agree that's why we're paying Mr. Fox's office to have that expertise? That's why we're paying Mr. Roman's office to give us legal expertise? I don't stand up here on a soapbox and speak of topography reports and things, I'm not an expert.
No, we're not saying that.
No, but what I'm saying to you is, if Mr. Fox, he made the point to call me tonight at six o'clock, and he said, oh, this particular application, we have to make sure that we are getting a grading plan because of the topography and this, that, and the other. And I, as chair of this board, I have to wait his opinion, and that's what we're paying him for. So I waited his opinion, and that's what we do. And if this gentleman can walk away tonight, he can go home, talk to his significant other and say, you know what? They want us to do a grading plan, it's gonna cost us a couple thousand dollars. If we reduce the, the size of the garage, X amount, remove it, we don't have to do any of this, and that, he is within his right to do that, and he has to spend nothing. Um, but if we don't make that known to, uh, George, that this is what we're requiring, then whatever happens, happens. We can't, we can't do that.
Is there, is there like a, and I know this is like just out of the box, but is there like a one-size-fits-all kind of draining system that someone can go to that would ensure that it wouldn't run off into a neighbor's property?
No, cause every, every property's different. You don't know whether it drains from the back to the front.
It could be lower to the neighbors.
He could, he could be lowered to his neighbor, he could be creating his own problem too. I mean, it's for his benefit, because like you were saying, his whole property drains across the side to where his fence is. Well, he's now putting a twenty-four by twenty-four foot structure in the middle of his yard, so he might be creating where the water's trying to get to the side is now stopped by his garage, and he could have a big puddle right in front of the foundation of his garage.
So some roofs, the roof drains too, it's the topography.
It, it's where everything would drink.
Right.
But, but the roof is now becoming impervious, and it's gonna have discharge where the downs 院's found, and those discharge are gonna be like, i- if he directs them right into his neighbor, they're gonna go right to that fence, and you don't know, maybe it goes to the corner of the fence and washes it out now. All of a sudden, fence falls over now. You have more arguments because somebody's fence fell over in the yard, and all that can be avoided, you know, or most of it, I shouldn't say all of it, can be avoided if you have a proper plan, and we pick it up early, we say, this isn't gonna work. You know, what are you gonna do? And then he could pipe it underground and get it to the street.
Then everybody's.
I'm not trying to take any things, but this letter that October was on the fifth of September, okay, we're at the eleventh, and you're getting a phone calls, you know, an hour before saying that, oh, I think you ought to ask.
But the applicant got that.
No, I had the applicant.
No, what I'm saying is, Nick, why wasn't that on there then?
Right here.
About the topography?
Yeah, right here. Somebody said the applicant got that.
He got it.
He knew before I walked in here, he knew he has a great.
He knew that.
Sure.
I sent him the letter.
Absolutely.
No, I agree with you, you have to have this review letter so that we can answer the questions. I mean, if he had an attorney, right, the attorney would've went to each item and said, we agree with the engineer, we disagree with the engineer, you know, willing to.
No, we all had this advantage. He just called me to reenter.
Right, and, and our, and our position is, again, like, I don't wanna, you know, beat into that horse, but you're not the only town going through this right now, and there's, there's a lot of neighboring towns, Bellmark, Haddon Heights, Collinswood, Audubon, that are going through the same thing, where they're looking at their ordinances and saying, hey.
Nothing here that.
There's nothing here that protects also the neighbors.
If we know, if we don't evolve. We have, we have to evolve, or, or we're just gonna have the same redundant problems.
Exactly, and I think that a start is like maintaining those thresholds. You say, like, we have a building coverage here of thirty-five percent, well, now, that's just for the building. So somebody could.
Side marks, concrete.
Exactly, so now you could take it a step further, and you say, fifty or sixty percent impervious, that's the number we're comfortable with.
It's nothing else, it's just an awareness, this is a little awareness.
Right.
Um, workshop tonight. I think, I think it's really good that we're all, you know, giving our comments a little bit of an awareness thing, so that everything that we look at, we can say, okay, how do you feel about this?
And, and my, my opinion is that I believe you should institute some kind of threshold, so you don't have the gentleman that comes in and says, well, if I'm at two feet, I get a variance, but if I just slide it over three feet, no variance, I can, you know, walk away, I can create the same problem, because we don't know if it creates a problem yet or not.
No, but the point you make is right, whether he, whether he needs a variance or not, part of that application to get a permit is the fact that it's gotta have some kind of drainage shown to him. Right? I mean, that.
Well, only, only if, like I said, I would say, only if it goes over the impervious coverage aspect of it.